The meeting to order on Tuesday, January 28th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And, um, let's see, I'm sorry, what are we doing? Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Doris, will you lead us in the flag salute?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Burke.
Here.
Commissioner Doris.
Here.
Commissioner Nichols.
Here.
Vice Chair Kine.
Here.
Chair Howley.
Here.
Okay, I'm going to open up some oral comments from the public. If anyone has anything they'd like to say. Hi.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brendan Byrd, City Engineer and Public Works Director. I just wanted to highlight that a project that came before the commission in May of 2024, the Gateway Project in Fortuna, which was funded by California, Clean California through Caltrans, has recently been substantially completed. We were excited last night, the sign went in, and now we're just down to a couple of final items, but I do have some photos I just wanted to share with the commission, as you were the first body to kind of see the initial design layout and some of the architecture of it. So I thought it a neat opportunity to bring it this evening, given it was just installed yesterday. So, really pleased to have your participation in my petition, yeah, my echo. Really pleased to have your participation and comments early on in the process, and we're really happy and pleased with how it turned out, so, thank you.
Yes, that's beautiful. I pulled off the freeway today and admired it right away.
Yeah, no, we're very pleased with it and
It's a great job.
Happy to partner with Caltrans and happy to get it done, so.
Nice, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, I'm going to close public comments. We're going to move on to item Item number three on the agenda. We are going to have
Steve Long told me when she was at our meeting that I'm just supposed to go.
Okay, we're going to make nominations for Chair and nominations for Vice Chair, and I am nominating Commissioner Kine for Chair and Commissioner Nichols for Vice Chair, and other nominations are very much wanted or needed.
I second both those nominations.
Nice. Okay, well, congratulations, can I say that?
You better vote.
I'll take a roll call vote.
Okay.
Commissioner Bennett.
I approve.
Commissioner Burke.
I approve.
Commissioner Doris.
Yes.
Commissioner Nichols.
Chair.
Commissioner Howley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Nichols, I should have said, I'm sorry.
That's all.
Yeah, Commissioner Kine.
Yes.
Yay, I'm glad because they're attending the conference, and that's wonderful, it's perfect.
Works out well.
Yay, congratulations, I'm happy. Okay, item on the, number four is consent calendar. Do I just read the A and B, or the whole thing?
Just read A and B.
Okay. September 24th, 2024, special meeting minutes. We need a motion to approve those minutes?
You can make a motion for both A and B at one time.
Okay, and December 10th, 2024, regular meeting minutes, I would love a motion.
I make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, number five, Planning Commission Business. Do I read them both? I'm sorry.
We're just going to start with A.
Okay, great. Modifications to the Mill District Specific Plan and Implementing Q-Qualified Zone and Design Guidelines in Response to Comments Received on the Supplemental Environmental Impact Report, Resolution P-2025-3121.
Okay, so who do I say is Chair now?
It doesn't work until the next one.
That's what I thought, okay.
It's the next one.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Howley.
Thank you.
And, yeah, okay, so I'm Sheri Meads, the Community Development Director, and we are here tonight to talk about a project that we have already been before this commission in detail on September 24th. So I'm going to provide a pretty high-level overview and background for anyone, for the benefit of anyone that wasn't at those meetings or hasn't been involved in the process. However, I would recommend that if you find this stimulating and
I'm sorry to cut in, but the city Planning Commission is muted.
You're not missing anything.
Okay. Can you hear it now?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you for letting us know. So I'll start over, just for fun. I'm Sheri Meads, the Community Development Director, and we're going to talk tonight about some specific targeted changes to the Mill District Specific Plan and supplemental EIR documents based on some comments that we received during the public comment period. As I mentioned before, we brought the full project before this body on September 24th. We've already gone to the City Council and provided a really in-depth presentation. So tonight I'm just going to try to breeze through some high-level background information for the benefit of anyone that isn't familiar with the project. But again, I do recommend you can either contact me, or if it's easy for you to find the agenda packets for the Planning Commission for September 24th and the October 21st City Council meeting. So, are the slides up?
There we go.
There we go. So, city efforts towards redeveloping the Mill District area date back to at least 2006, when the community recommended and city, then City Council, determined that the former Pacific Lumber Company mill site should be redeveloped with a mix of land uses. Through the general plan adoption process in 2010, the city designated a Mill District Focus Area and General Plan and Land Use Designation, which includes the former mill site and adjoining existing residential, commercial, and industrial uses. Ever since that time, the area has been referred to as the Mill District. A former area plan, which is referred to in the existing general plan, was drafted but was not adopted. In 2021, acknowledging that the vacant former mill site was becoming a community nuisance and recognizing that the then-owner was not successfully engaged in planning, marketing, improving, or developing this important site, the City of Fortuna initiated the Mill District Specific Plan planning process. And in 2023, approximately 64 acres of the former mill site were sold to a developer actively marketing the site as the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center. He's who let us know that we were not being heard, so welcome him to the call. As envisioned in the Mill District Specific Plan, the Mill District area, notably the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center, will transform the city's most underutilized area into an important hub for economic, employment, tourism, and residential development. Next slide, please. So the Mill District Specific Plan requires general plan land use element amendments to allow a range of industrial uses in the Mill District, to enable certain development within the Mill District 100-year floodplain areas, and to expand protections for the riparian areas around Strong's and Mill Creeks. It also replaces commercial and industrial square footage caps with ongoing business district activity and condition monitoring programs. Mixed-use developments, including residential, will remain allowable and are encouraged. The Mill District Area Land Use Plan will support, improve, and increase the city's economic, employment, tourism, and residential potential. Next slide, please. So the Mill District Specific Plan itself is made up of six chapters. Chapter one establishes the purposes of the plan and its history and physical context. Chapter two provides the guiding principles for development within the plan based on input from community stakeholders, city staff, technical consultants, city council, commissions, and requirements of state law. Chapter three describes the characteristics and locations of the various land uses that will develop in the specific plan area. Chapter four describes the circulation, infrastructure, and public services improvements necessary to accommodate the anticipated development in the area, and provides implementing policies and performance measures. Chapter five summarizes how much it's going to cost, how we think we might be able to pay for it, and various options for financing the public improvements. Chapter six describes the steps needed to implement the specific plan and the relationship of this document to other city documents. And it's important to note that the specific plan relies on the city's zoning ordinance, which we will be incorporating what's called a Q-qualifying zone. There are several in the city now, they're kind of like an overlay district where you want to have certain additions to or changes to what are allowed uses, or the development standards for that particular area. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the specific plan itself includes performance measures, policies, goals, really looking in a holistic way how to make that the most productive and beneficial spot to the city, because it's currently the most underutilized, and we're really missing great opportunity there. So, as I mentioned, it includes a Q-qualified zone that'll be specific to the Mill District, and really what we're trying to do is allow pretty much any use that is compatible with other uses. There are design standards and that type of thing to make sure that things that go in there work well together. And again, it is all going to depend on how much money we get, when we get it, and the priorities set based on that. Next slide, please. So I'm going to highlight right now two, well, three technical changes, that we thought we had everything buttoned down, with these types of documents, there's always room for improvement. So, in rereading it, we noticed that there were references to the Great Redwood Trail Agency, that we accidentally called them the Great Redwood Trail Authority in certain cases. So staff is recommending that we correctly and consistently throughout all Mill District Specific Plan-related documents make that correction to Great Wood Trail Agency. And then there are two other modifications. One is to policy LUC and Performance Measure P4. They're not, they're technical changes, but they're to improve transparency and clarity. We don't want the public to have to look at a bunch of different things to get an answer. And while the information that's added to, as you can see on these slides, to the policy and the performance standard, they're included in the narrative, they're included in the sub-area layout, land use program, environmental review, and all of that, we just felt that it would be easier if we just actually added the same language into the policy and performance standard, just like I said, for transparency, clarity, and just to make it easier. So, that will mean that when we get to the motion, it's already a cumbersome motion, and if you guys decide to accept these in-person changes, I'll be happy to read the recommended motion, and you'd be able to just say so moved if you desire. We'll get there. So anyways, I can go through line by line, I can read it out loud, or if you guys are happy with what you see on the slide, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to my excellent partners at Plan West, who will take it through the rest of the way. We have John Miller and Vanessa Blodgett here to help us with discussion on the EIR comment letters and the city's responses.
My name is John Miller with Plan West Partners, and Vanessa and I are here to provide some details. First thing that I'm going to do is talk at a high level about the comments on the draft EIR that were received, and then how we address the comment as part of the final EIR or outside of the final EIR. Comments were received from the Great Redwood Trail Agency and a law firm of Blum, Collins, and Ho on behalf of the Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance. The comments from the Great Redwood Trail Agency really didn't address the EIR, they addressed the specific plan, the narrative in the specific plan, and some of the policies and performance measures that related to the Great Redwood Trail. And the edits that have been made, which are, I think, in either Exhibit 1 or Exhibit 2 of the staff report, show the city's intent to coordinate closely with the Great Redwood Trail Agency, and also changes to refine the description of the Great Redwood Trail, and to include the master plan for the Great Redwood Trail as a plan that bears a relationship to the Mill District Specific Plan. Also, we replaced an exhibit showing the trails within the Mill District Specific Plan area to explicitly show how the Great Redwood Trail extends south from the Mill District Specific Plan area. The comments from, through the law firm, from the Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance were extensive, and I'm going to summarize them at a high level, and they were concerned about the term supplemental versus subsequent environmental impact report. And this is really a content, this is an issue about name rather than a content issue. There's been state Supreme Court cases regarding supplemental versus subsequent, the content requirements are the same, and we've met the content requirements. There were a number of, a number of the specific comments were about the use of the assumed buildout based on the concept submitted by the property owner, which was used in the environmental review and used in the studies about how much infrastructure, how much utilities and services would be used, and the potential impacts to the circulation system. And the EIR, the project description identified that the assumed buildout is less than the maximum theoretical buildout, and the maximum theoretical buildout is basically dividing the acres by the maximum allowable density or the maximum area ratio for commercial uses. And the EIR determined that the maximum theoretical capacity isn't reasonably foreseeable. It's well beyond what the property owner proposed, and in the general plan itself, general plan didn't use maximum theoretical capacity, because it's far more square footage, far more units than could be used in 100 years within Fortuna. And so the response to comments demonstrates that it's not reasonably foreseeable, it's not appropriate to use. The EIR, or the comments focus, says that this is a project, it's not, it's not a program. And they point to the square footage of the maximum theoretical capacity, saying, "Look at all, look at all of the development that's proposed to occur, therefore this is a project." And the response to comments goes into detail, saying, "This is a program. This is a plan to, to set up the process for how future development that's proposed would be allowed, would be approved." How could it be approved? That's what the specific plan and the design guidelines and implementing Q-zone do, they set up a process. There are no plans for development, specific plans for development, so this is a program, it's not a project. And then there's a suggestion that the, the specific plan and the changes to the general plan are extensive, requiring a whole new environmental impact report. So they cite that there's a change in, that there's an increase to the floor-to-area ratio. It's being changed from .8, .5 to .8, which is an increase, but the, all of the commercial areas surrounding the Mill District is, allows development at that intensity, and that's the floor-area ratio. So if your parcel is 1 acre and your floor-area ratio is .5, that means that you can build about 20,000 square feet of building area. If it's .8, and I can't do that in my head, but it's 7,500 square feet or something like that, could be allowed, a greater, a greater percentage of building area could be developed. And this is, this is an infill area, it's a mixed-use area, so having a higher floor-area ratio that's similar to the, to the Fortuna Boulevard, all of the areas that surround it, should be considered a good thing to, in order to maximize the use of land in the infill area rather than expanding out. The citywide development caps were removed, and they said that was an extensive change that should require an environmental impact report. And the, the caps were included in the original plan, not to reduce any specific environmental impacts within the city, but to reduce the likelihood that blight could occur in the surrounding region, in particular Eureka. And it, so it's, the caps had a strange basis, so we're, instead of eliminating the caps, we're replacing the caps with a monitoring program. That's a regular annual monitoring program, there isn't one now, hardly anyone knows about the caps anyway, this is a way to keep the Planning Commission and the council apprised of the caps, whether or not there are issues occurring in one area of the city due to vacancy or otherwise. The, they were concerned about the allowing development within the 100-year floodplain within the Mill District. The 100-year floodplain within the Mill District, aside from the stream itself, was an area that was used for mill purposes historically. Outside of the Mill District, you're allowed to develop within the 100-year floodplain as long as you comply with the city's flood development policies and regulations. So basically, the, they're maximizing the use of an important infill site, allowing development within the 100-year floodplain, providing increased protections for the stream, seems like an appropriate thing to do, and the, an aquatic resource analysis was done, demonstrating that there's no environmental impact of allowing that, and it's, it's done elsewhere within the city. They suggested that creating a Q-zone in and of itself was an extensive change that requires an environmental impact report. The general plan calls for focus area policies and programs to implement the Mill District plan, and that's what the Q-zone does, so it is, it is not an extensive change. They also had subject area experts who submitted comments on the air quality analysis, and their comments both said that the way that air quality was addressed in the general plan EIR was inadequate, and it's, the way that the Mill District Specific Plan relies on the prior analysis is more inadequate. And we looked closely at that, and we felt that it was best to redo the air quality analysis as part of the final EIR, and we did so, and stayed within the impact conclusions of the prior EIR. So, my summary is, is, so there's two impact categories that relate to federal air quality regulations, whether or not the Mill District would obstruct an applicable air quality management plan, or whether or not it would have a cumulatively considerable net increase in any federal criteria pollutant. We, we evaluated it, and the, the assumed development that, that's in the Mill District Specific Plan would exceed the, the square footage that was put into the air quality model by the, in the general plan EIR. And so to stay under the, stay within the conclusions of the prior EIR, we're including, there were EIR mitigations that'll find themselves into, their way into the specific plan, that caps development within the specific plan at what was previously analyzed, and to the extent there's development pressures to exceed that, then the air quality modeling would need to be redone. And the, it isn't as though the prior square footage resulted in a less-than-significant impact, the impact was significant and unavoidable, and the impact continues to be significant and unavoidable, that there's the potential that full buildout of the city would result in emissions of nitrous oxide and other, other federal criteria pollutants that would exceed the, a state, a federal state's or the local standard. And that remains true. It could, it could still happen, and even if, if it was reanalyzed based on the assumed buildout, it's probably, the conclusion would be the same, it would be significant and unavoidable. So we've incorporated this mitigation to keep it at the level that was previously determined in the last EIR. The other two impact topics were potential impacts of toxic air contaminants or odors, and the, the potential for a range of industrial development near existing or planned residential has the potential to result in emissions of, significant emissions of toxic air contaminants. And the, the current general plan has a policy that doesn't allow development that would result in those circumstances. But the specific plan and the general plan don't have a way to ensure that that won't occur, so there is the potential for a significant environmental effect. So several additional mitigations are, are proposed as part of, as Mill District policies. One, requiring a use permit for industrial uses so that the emissions of toxic air contaminants can be evaluated as part of approving the industrial use. Another is the state recently adopted statewide design standards for distribution-related uses. That will be, they will take effect in January 2026, so we're saying we're going to apply them in January, upon approval of the specific plan, so that there, we consistently apply the state rules. Another is setting forth really clear referral requirements to the local air district, to ensure that if there's an issue, they're notified of the project, and they can, they can make comments. And the last is, there was a recent case that a local agency didn't have clear criteria for toxic air contaminants, and this, the State Air Resources Board has a land use handbook, and so neighboring jurisdictions have used the land use handbook as clear criteria, and so we're, we've included a policy to use the state's land use criteria as the objective standard for what is an impact, a toxic air contaminant impact to a sensitive receptor. So those are, these seem like reasonable policies, that we've gone to the air district and presented them to the air district, and the air district is favorable of those. And we think that the, the procedures that we've set up for the Mill District can help streamline approvals. So that's the high level, it took a lot longer than I thought it would, but that's the high level review. We could go into detail on any one of the areas, whether the changes to the text relating to the Great Redwood Trail, or any of the specifics of the, the air quality policies. That's the end.
Thank you, that was very, a lot, that's a hard, hard work on your guys' part. Yes, I have many things to say, but I'm going to keep that to myself. And I, I guess I'm going to open up and have questions with the staff, for my commissioners? Staff, or? No questions?
I do have a question, related to mainly the air quality, but I guess everything that you had mentioned, is this only for the mill site specific? Is it for new development citywide, or is it for all current citywide entities?
All of these relate specifically to the Mill District, so the, none of these overlap areas. There are greater general plan changes, the removal of the cap citywide, but that's separate from this air quality. separate from this air quality, these air quality.
So anything that's already established or outside of the Mill District would not be affected by these?
Correct.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Sheri? None?
I was just going to mention that the state law regarding logistics, uses, and distribution, that will be citywide, not just within the Mill District-specific plan. And the city will be embarking on an update to our general plan, so that will be a good time to consider, you know, potentially adopting more of these if that's something that is so desired.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'll open up public comment. Well, I'll close public comment. And then I need a motion.
So due to the, if I may, Chair Hally, due to the cumbersome of the motion, I'll go ahead and read it, and then if you guys approve that motion, you can say so moved, and then continue with the usual process. So this is a motion to adopt resolution P-2025-3121, recommending city council adoption of the Mill District-specific plan, including modifications to policy LUC and performance measure P4 as recommended by staff, implementing Q-qualified zone and design guidelines as modified, and supplementing planning commission findings adopted by resolution P-2024-3118 on September 24th of 2024.
So moved? Yes. So moved. Roll call, or?
So we need a motion and a, I'm sorry, I missed it. Commissioner Bennett?
I approve.
Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Doris?
Yes.
Commissioner Nichols? Vice Chair Kine?
Yes.
Vice Halli, Chair Hally? Great.
Thank you.
Before we move to the next item, I'd like to ask if I can switch the name badges that were put up differently tonight.
Oh, yes, please.
Right. Okay, our next item on the agenda is Newburgh Glen Townhomes multi-family development. Adoption of an initial study and mitigated, sorry, negative declaration ISM, I'm sorry, I'm getting blurry vision, MND, approval of a request to reduce the 50-foot wetland buffer, design review approval, and extension of the permit vesting period to two years. Resolution P-2025-3122, city file number PLAN15.
Great. Good evening again, Chair Hally. I'm Sheri Meads, Community Development Director, and I'm going to kick this over to another one of our great consultants with Plan West. It's Michelle Nielsen, who helped with this project. Again, they're instrumental in support right now. So I just want to preface and say that this project is something that staff is very, very favorable towards. It, I want to point out that the applicant has made many concessions that the city required, has been a joy to work with, and has the best intent for the city. I believe he's here and may be making a presentation, but I wanted to just start out and say that this is the type of development that the city really needs. So, take it away, Michelle.
Hopefully you can hear me. Thank you for having me. Find the right button here. So the project before you this evening is a, for the construction of 24 townhomes-style multi-family dwelling units. As part of the development, there will be open space in recreation areas, passive and active recreation areas for residents of the development. To manage storm water runoff, there will be bioswells that will be developed onsite. These will be low-impact development, designed to accept storm water and then to, for it to then percolate out into city systems and city infrastructure. As part of the project includes the creation of an additional wetland buffer area with appropriate plantings, onsite improvements for guest parking, landscaping, perimeter fencing and screening, and the buildings will be oriented, the ones that face, that front Newburgh Road will be pedestrian-oriented with the front doors facing the street, split-rail fences, landscaping and whatnot will be on the front edge of Newburgh Road. Other recreational areas will be, there'll be a community green with the gazebo, half-court basketball area as well. And then also other improvements, you know, driveway areas, parking I mentioned, solid waste disposal handling area that will be covered, and those types of features. So is probably, your commission and the public have seen it as a very, very detailed site plan, so this is just the south part of the development. Hopefully my cursor works here and you can see it. So there's these two buildings, oh, shoot, snap. Two buildings, A and B, that face Newburgh Road, and then towards the back, in the middle, if you will, there is buildings C and D. And also, one thing, the development also features dedicated one-car garages for each of the units. And those will also provide storage and onsite laundry facilities for each of the tenants, occupants of the project. And you can see the, in this portion of the site, the, hopefully I don't move the slide, you can see the community green with the gazebo. Probably my cursor isn't showing up very well. And then to the west side of the development, kind of in the middle, is the playlot with a short little trail around it, and there will be some interpretive signage installed. Go, hit the right button. And so this is the part of the same site plan. This is the northern portion of the site plan. It shows the wetland area and the buffer, and then also the two other buildings, Building E and Building F, the half-court basketball area. These little blue areas, the sinuous is also part of the bioswells that are the LID design. They have a sinuous design that was a change made to the project based on recommendations from the Department of California Department of Fish and Wildlife, kind of backing up in to what Sheri mentioned. The project does include a request to reduce the wetland buffers, their 50 feet, to allow the development of the bioswells. That type of use is not specifically enumerated in the general plan, so that's why they have the exception request. And there will also be less than 630 square feet of impervious surface that will encroach into the 50-foot buffer, and that's associated with the internal driveway for, to make it wide enough for fire trucks, and a couple corners of the units. But less than 650 square feet, and the bioswells, that would be within the 50-foot setback. Originally, the project came in with a greater reduction request, but as the director mentioned, the project was revised and made some adjustments to better accommodate the wetland buffer and to minimize those impacts. And so this is just a map of the site that was contained in your packet, but the project site is designated by the Fortuna General Plan for Residential High Density. The maximum density that is allowed in that land use designation is 29 dwelling units per acre. The project density, if you include the wetland and the wetland buffer, that results in a density of seven dwelling units per acre. If you take those wetland area and the buffers out of that math equation, it results in 11 dwelling units per acre for a density. And then you can see the other existing development to the west and adjacent to the property in this slide. With respect to zoning, which is what we're looking at here, the property is zone residential multi-family, and multi-family development is principally permitted. So that's, there's not a use permit before your commission, because the multi-family development, the, you know, six buildings with four dwelling units in each of the buildings, that actually does not require a use permit in this zone. It's the design review request to allow the two buildings to be a little bit wider, and to allow the setback reduction to allow the bioswells and the extended permit time. That's before your commission this evening. And as mentioned, the project's potential impacts relate to biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources. And in your packet there, and in the environmental document, which is attachment three, is the mitigation measures that the applicant is committed to implementing to ensure the project doesn't result in degradation of biological resources. That includes activities during the pre-construction for frog surveys, because of the presence of the wetland, there's a potential for there to be red-legged frogs in the area, so they do frog surveys before construction, ensure they're not there. And then also to, if the construction occurs during the migratory nesting period, which is specified by DFW, who would be the subject matter expert on that, they would have to do nesting surveys. So those commitments, also during the construction phase, to ensure that equipment doesn't encroach into the wetland, doesn't compact the soil and other things. And then to ensure that after, at the completion of construction for the first five years, to do annual biological reports that would be submitted to the city to ensure that the, there hasn't, you know, the LID is functioning as designed and as installed, and there's not, you know, the wetland is staying healthy, and that the wetland plantings and whatnot in the buffer, that they're becoming established and persist and, you know, healthy, so that the project doesn't have impacts. And those are commitments from the applicant to do those things. And should he elect to sell the project, that those would be binding on the successors and interests as well if they went forward with the project. The initial study mitigated NEGDEC was circulated last fall, and as indicated on that last bullet, it's attachment three, you'd be served, your commission's being asked to certify the initial study mitigated NEGDEC, and then also as part of that to adopt the mitigation monitoring report, which has, it's very similar to conditions of approval, it's just a little more specific to what the mitigation measures and who does what and that sort of thing. So just some highlights of the conditions of approval. This is not all of them. The applicant is to secure all federal, state, and local permits, develop and maintain the project in accordance with the applicant, the site plan. That's attachment four, all those sheets, and the conditions of approval and mitigation measures that are in your packet. To limit the construction noise Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. If they needed to work outside those hours, they would have to make a written request to the city, and that would need to be approved. Satisfy engineering division's conditions of approval, and as I previously mentioned, submit a biologist's report for the first five years post-construction. And the required findings for approval are on the slide. Compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, consistency with the Fortuna General Plan, Fortuna Municipal Code, and zoning regulations, finding that the project's design is consistent with the policy set forth in the design review manual, and it's staff's recommendation to adopt the initial study and mitigation, mitigated NEGDEC, and the mitigation monitoring reporting plan, approve the request to reduce the 50-foot wetland buffer with limitations and conditions, grant the design review approval, and approve a two-year permit vesting period. Normally, it's one year. That would just give them a little more extra time to get all the permits secured and whatnot. So, but, so that, happy to answer any questions there may be.
The biological reports, the annual reports, who will be conducting those and delivering those reports?
That would be a biologist that would be retained by the applicant, and those reports would be submitted to the city for review. And if need be, if there's information indication, like the biologist identifies there's issues with the wetland, then we would want to consult with the CDFW on those, and obviously with the applicant, have a communication.
I have one other question that wasn't apparent on the plans that I saw, and you may not even know this, but is there any kind of a physical barrier between the riparian area and the development area as planned?
There will be a split-rail fence, definitely where the playlot and the trail is. I don't think it goes around all of it, but there will be a, some barrier, but not to be, there needs to be the ability for animals, the resident critters, to be able to move through as well. So not, that's why it's not a solid fence. That was based on a recommendation from CDFW.
So it's a passive barrier there?
And if I may, we do have the applicant and the architect for the project here, so maybe after we're done with this section, they'll be able to step up to the microphone.
I just had a question on the density. You had said this one equates to about 11 dwelling units per acre. What is offhand, if it was a full build-out, like the RM, what would that allow? Like how many units? Do you know that offhand?
I could probably do a quick calculation and come back with that. I think given there would have to be higher, the buildings would have to be higher than what they are, and there would probably be less parking on, off-street parking on the site in order to accommodate that, and also accommodate the wetland and the buffer. They, I'm sure the applicant could elaborate further, but I think they'd have to be at least three stories and other adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Which is the quick question on the bioswells, is the intention to treat all impervious surfacing in the LIDs, and then it goes into the stormwater system?
Yes, I do believe that is the intent.
It is. Anything else? Well, I think your presentation was great, and the project is beautiful, and I appreciate the housing. So I guess I will open the public hearing and receive public comment.
Hi, Will Adams, project owner and builder. I just want to thank Sheri and Michelle for a good job. I think they presented it really well. This is not our first project in Fortuna. We've done a number of them, and I think they are all real high-quality. Our tenants end up staying long periods of time. They're in high demand, they're full 100% occupancy all the time, and it just kind of shows the demand for this type of project. With me is Garrett McSorley, the project architect, who can answer any specific questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
While you're still up there, could you please mention some of the other projects that you worked on locally in Fortuna, or that we might know of, and other, develop other towns or cities?
First one we did was the building with Edward Jones on Main Street. That's mixed-use with townhouses behind it. Another one we've done is just a three-plex on Stillman Way. And then most recently, we've done a 30-unit project on Smith Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kim Peterson, and I'm the resident, maybe to the east of the property. I really like, I've seen some of the other projects, and so I'm excited about having something besides a brush falling over my fence. I do have kind of a concern and a question. First thing is concern, and it's just something to be addressed, is like, the fire department, when they kind of developed their project, then, I don't think it was quite designed for drainage right there. They put rocks in there and some stuff got swept off. Maybe I could have talked to the, you know, some people to, something to fix that or something, but when this project goes in, I want to make sure that the water, it backs up onto my property now, and to make sure that the drainage, it used to go across, back by the fire department, and that field would be like full of water and then draining out the back, and it doesn't do that anymore. And so I just want to make sure that that continues if they, and I see they have trees going down there, but I know that right, like the tree right next door to me, that drops down, and so the water goes out that way. And so if they kind of make it level across there, I just want to make sure the water continues to drain from the corner of my property. So that'd be number one. Number two, I'd like to see if it's possible, and I don't know when they do this, is if there's going to be access, and I don't know if that'd be speaking to someone else, but to be able to access. If they're going to have trees there and stuff, I have stuff coming into my sewer lines from the side, and without me digging up all my sewer lines, because I have to get it, you know, rooted because of the tree roots and stuff. If it's, might be possible just to run straight across there, so I'm not having, trying to go all the way out through the front, so that'd be something to think about, or a possibility for me, especially if I ever have any development or anything else, it'd be nice. Anyways, I think it's a great project. I've seen some of the other projects, they look amazing, and I'm excited for it.
Hi. Thank you. So I'm Deirdre Peterson, and we are 1655 Newburgh, my husband, and as he addressed, the flooding that could occur if that property is not properly drained backwards towards the Strong's Creek, that then it floods into our property, especially from the City of Fortuna, the fire department, excuse me. I mean, they're out there with trucks pumping frequently during rainstorms to prevent it from flooding that whole backlot where they do their training. And so we, that really needs to be something that we keep and we address, so that our property doesn't flood. And I know that the property next to us, just on the other side of Nicholson Way, their back property flooded for several years. And so they're working on it, but more building and taking away the tree structures that are there, and it's beautiful green, as you can see, it's just gorgeous. Lot of deer, raccoon, opossum, every animal, bird you can think of. It's just, it's, but this design is gorgeous. So my question is not just with flooding, but also with fence line. What will the fencing look like? Will we be able to have access to drive out without getting hit on Newburgh Road? As you know, there's the daycare center across the street. It's busy. That place is, we are, that whole area is slammed with traffic, with parking, so we've got to make sure that anyone who lives along Newburgh Road has access to their driveways, that they're not being blocked by people trying to visit or whatever, or trying to access the daycare. So let's make sure that the fence line is appropriate, and that we can see when we are driving out. And then I kind of wanted to know if our fence would be removed, and what might be replacing that. What would that look like? What will the structure be? Hoping that it'll complement, you know, what, complement the new development, as well as complement our property and future properties, so. Anything else?
Hi, everybody. My name is Charlie Lewis. I live on South 15th Street, 321 in fact. And from what I saw in the drawings, it looks like the play area is going to be directly behind my back fence. I'm curious about our privacy and noise levels. The question about the fencing was excellent, and I want to reinforce that as well.
It certainly will, and the privacy issue.
Hi, I'm Garrett McSorley, I'm the architect, and thanks for your review and for staff for all the work coordinating, getting us to this point, and to the neighbors for your kind comments and for your concerns, most notably flooding and drainage. That's a very important topic, and I think the drainage conditions on the fire department property, working with the city engineering department, hopefully, hopefully this project can be a catalyst to improve any issues that are happening on that neighboring property, even if it's not actually directly part of this project. We need to make sure we keep that delineation. The exact look of the fencing, I think in my mind, it was going to be, you know, conventional redwoods, cedar fencing. The owner is a carpenter, contractor, we know they're going to build high-quality, so I don't think we have any issues of that. And if there's, you know, the details, issues of existing fences being on property lines and all of those things, that will all be worked out, because we have a surveyor on the project, make sure all those things are taken care of. The daycare across the street was considered in part of the project design. You notice on Newburgh, at the driveway entrance to the townhomes here, there's some small, like, bullbouts in the street, and those are intended to help and be a traffic hall element, so traffic driving through that section of Newburgh, because it's kind of a connector, that little section of road, where people kind of just jump across to get to the other side of town, and we want to slow that traffic down, and hopefully that little, interesting, that little bit of landscape in Bullbout will help do that. And then the play area, it used to be about five times larger, and we had to shrink it down in order to make sure we were, you know, minimizing our impacts on the wetland. So, we wish there was more room for kids to play, but the, it's a small totlot, you know, it's not, it's not a big giant jungle gym. There is a basketball court on the project, but it's on the other side of the property, away from any neighbors, so probably that's more of a source of noise than the little totlot. And hopefully we'll be able to address any other concerns that come up along the way. Obviously, the drawings that you have here, they're the schematic design to get us to this point. Once we get approved, then we move through construction documents, and we work with the building department to get building permits, and we look forward to doing that soon. So, thank you, appreciate your time.
I have one question. Just a concern of the neighbors there. Is it your intention to fence the entire north side and with new fencing, or are you going to allow the existing back fences of those homes to provide the boundary?
Well, anybody's fence who's on their own property wouldn't be, you know, wouldn't be touched, you know, if it's their fence and it's on their parcel. You know, sometimes there's cases where we build a new fence on our own project parcel side, that way we're not messing with anybody's property.
I guess that's what I was asking, is that your intention is to put a new fence on your property?
Yeah, new fence all the way across, so it's all consistent, all looks nice, and if a neighbor wants to take their fence down, and they can adopt this as their new back fence, then that's great.
So they can either keep what they have, or they could take their fence down and enjoy what you've built there for them.
Yeah, yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah, there is a gate shown in the front driveway entrance to the townhomes, yeah.
Great, thank you for that information.
I have one question too.
Yes.
Do you feel like you're going to be able to address these flooding problems?
Which, which problems?
The flooding.
Oh, flooding. It's interesting, I think there's a lot of infrastructure in that area that was just kind of more, you know, just the result of 50, 60, 80 years of development without really having a master drainage plan, but now that's changed. The city has really detailed drainage plans, they've done major improvements to that creek, and I think this project is helping that process, because now we're uncovering old drainage pipes that had been sitting, you know, covered by brush for a few decades. We've daylighted that, and we're checking it out, and then the city's able to get out there and, you know, see exactly what's happening, so I think this project's going to improve drainage, for sure.
That's excellent.
Because that's a big deal to me, what they're experiencing, you know, water coming in from all over the place and ruining your property.
Just to, I think what I'm hearing you say is that there's not going to be any issue of excess drainage or water movement off of your parcel onto any adjoining parcels.
Right.
Right.
That's true.
But if a neighbor has a flooding problem on their parcel, it's not going to be because of water you diverted onto their property, it's going to be because of the grading on their own lot.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah, and if we can make the whole situation better while we're doing it, we will, yeah.
Okay, good.
Very nice. Thank you. Any other, yes?
So, the thing about the drainage, we had drainage before where it drained out, so it's not like we've done anything to prevent it to come in there, that type of a thing. So whether it be the fire department on one edge, or the development here, somehow the water used to drain out that way, just want to make sure it continues, so it doesn't kind of create a dam back there and then come back up in, you know, yeah.
Or for, would it be flowing downward? It's like, we...
Yeah, there's no, no way that any of us would know that.
I just thought I'd jump in on the topic. Yeah, again Brennan Bird, the city engineer. So the development standard that we would usually apply, and again, these are schematic plans where they are in nature, and as Garrett alluded to, you know, the follow-up from here is detailed engineering plans for the site work, and detailed building development plans for the structures themselves. So one of the requirements we have as part of our usual drainage standards is that when a project goes in, it has to have grading and improvements as to not exacerbate issues on neighboring properties, and that's how we would look at it in this particular case. I would be curious to meet with, to meet with the property owners and see if there's something as part of some past projects that may have created some unintended consequences, because that can happen. And if there's an opportunity to where we can address maybe something that has happened in the past, you know, I'd be more than happy to spend some time to see if we could do that. To Garrett's point as well, you know, we would always look to see if there's some other opportunity in a project like this, as it goes through the entitlement process through the city, to make sure that if there's, you know, some low-hanging fruit, to make a betterment as opposed to, you know, just making sure that the site design wasn't creating more impacts. That's, of course, something we would look at too, so.
Nice.
Yeah, just some information from staff on that, and happy to answer any questions if they come up.
Thank you, thank you so much.
So there's, there's your man.
Yeah, there's your answer. Yay, thank you.
Hi, Will Adams again. I just want to address the fence question. We always end up building a new fence, and we'll get with any property owners before we do that, once we get construction underway. And then if you don't want your old fence, kind of as an act of a good neighbor, we'll remove that for you and get rid of it. And we'll give you this fence plan before we start anything, make sure everybody is in agreement. And then with the playground, we're going to have some sort of set hours when residents can use the playground, you know, you know, maybe by 8:00 PM, it's closed at that point, so we'll work that out. And then once people move in, we're always available if there's any concerns with noise.
Thank you. Children playing are happy.
But they're annoying as hell.
No.
Sorry.
Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns for staff, or?
I had a question for staff. I just wanted to check, did anybody from Rainbow Junction, the daycare across the street, or the property owners that own that building, did they reach out at all, or any other public comment?
No, so this project was noticed, we actually put it in the newspaper, as well as sending the mailers to 300 feet around property owners. We did not hear any comments from anyone, but I am happy that some folks showed up.
Yeah, it definitely made the rounds on Facebook, so.
I try to avoid that.
I know, me too, but I did see it.
Okay. Well, I think I will make, I will close public comment, or close the public hearing, I apologize. And, do we now consider and discuss again, or did we just do that? It says on number four.
I think you actually did that step by...
Okay, thank you.
...being able to speak with the applicant, and it's just, you asked, if you don't have any other further questions, we're ready to move on.
Great, awesome.
Thank you.
So now we would want a motion, and a second.
A motion to...
Do you want it?
I move to approve Resolution P-2025-3122.
Resolution P-2025-3122, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna, certifying compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and adopting the initial study mitigated negative declaration, State Clearing House number 2024091130, and conditionally approving the request to reduce the 50-foot wetland buffer, and granting design review approval for the Newburgh Glen Townhomes multifamily development at 1569 Newburgh Road, Fortuna, City File number Plan 15. Commissioner Bennett?
I vote to approve.
Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Doris?
Yes.
Commissioner Nichols?
Yes.
Vice Chair Keine?
Yes.
Chair Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. I make them, or just...
I do see here that it appears that the motion unfortunately did not include the two-year vesting period, so can we, yeah?
So amended.
Second.
I second that. Amended.
No. So moved? Okay, great. I, we're going to adjourn. Thank you.
Yay.